May I ask, come to order, say the valedications?
Valedications to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we have a few people that would like to speak this evening. There are a couple of input, Mark Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Mark Anderson. I am the executive director of the Lindesburg Housing Authority. In 2007, Housing America was created in October. It was designated as the annual lot for the NARO, which is the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials, and its members, so it collectively raised awareness of the need for and the importance of safe, decent, and affordable housing in quality communities. During the month of October, events are held around the country by housing authorities, redevelopment agencies, and government entities to spotlight the great works that communities such as Lindesburg have done and successes that we realize that so many residents depend on. Public housing in the U.S. provides a home for more than 2.3 million people, 37 percent of whom are children. Sadly, there continues to be an unmet housing need for many of America's most vulnerable citizens. In 1969, the city of Lindesburg had foresight and recognized the need for affordable housing for low-income families in the community. And because of that, the U.S. ended up cooperating with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD, the former Lindesburg Housing Authority. The mission of the Lindesburg Housing Authority is to provide decent, safe, sanitary, and affordable housing for low-income families. The Lindesburg Housing Authority, otherwise known as Villaroe Apartments, consists of 35 duplexes, constituting 70 apartments. They are one-, two-, and three-bedroom apartments that currently house approximately 107 individuals of all ages. Nationwide, over 140 million people are poor or low-income. Despite strong economic growth, wealth inequality has expanded and the cost of living has increased, and social programs have been cut dramatically. In the U.S., over 13.8 million households cannot even afford water. And I'm happy to say that the Villaroe water supply had no additional costs for the residents and has been that way for a long time. As the provided proclamation, which I've shared with Mayor Anderson, states, nearly 41 million households now pay more than half of their income for housing. And more than four out of five households with incomes below $15,000 pay more than 30 percent of their income for housing. In Kansas, approximately 40 percent of people are poor or low-income, for a total of about 1.1 million residents. And this includes 49 percent of children, 41 percent of women, 61 percent of people of color, and 33 percent of white people. From 1979 to 2012, the income for the top 1 percent in Kansas grew by 142 percent, while the income for the bottom 99 percent increased by 15 percent. In Kansas, about 2,572 people are homeless. And current estimates indicate that working at the state minimum wage, it takes 86 hours of work per week to afford a two-bedroom apartment. 584,000 workers make under $15 per hour in Kansas, and that constitutes about 47 percent of the whole Kansas workforce. 219,000 people participate in some type of supplemental nutrition assistance program, such as food stamps. The Lindesburg Housing Authority provides a vital, quality service for low-income individuals and families. 51 percent of our residents are mentally or disabled. And nearly 20 percent of our households support children who are less than 18 years of age. 46 percent of our household incomes are less than the $15,400-per-year extremely low income limit. So nearly half are below the $15,400-per-year income limit, set by law for one person. Some of our residents survive on less than $9,000 per year. And so for them, for those individuals, affordable housing is incredibly important. We provide a very valuable asset for those individuals. 33 percent of our household income at Villaroe falls between the $15,425,600-per-year very low income limit. And 90 percent of our households with children less than 18 years of age are at or below the very low income limit set for households of three or more persons. Maslow's hierarchy of needs, if you remember from your high school or college psychology courses, says that before individuals can attain higher-level needs, such as education, self-esteem, a feeling of accomplishment, or your full potential as a human being, that certain lower-level needs need to do that. And those needs include things such as food, water, shelter, and safety. American values and values of affordable housing. Earlier this month, I provided Lindesburg Mayor Betty Anderson with a proclamation to be written into public record, which recognizes the need for and celebrates public housing. And I hope that you will join me and the staff of the Lindesburg Housing Authority and recognize in October as Housing America Lot to increase the awareness for affordable housing.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Mark, do you have any plans for recognizing Villaroe as and celebrating 50 years and recess with a dingle? Here in your chair.
We certainly, we certainly had to discuss that.
Good, thank you. Interesting numbers, thank you.
I have a question too, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Do you feel the amount of housing that you have in Lindesburg is handling the need?
No, I don't. We have a waiting list. It's pretty much a perpetual waiting list. It varies by number of bedrooms. But on our one-bedroom waiting list, which is primarily populated by elderly and disabled people, we typically have anywhere from 15 to 20 people waiting for an apartment. Two-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments usually are six to eight people at any given time waiting for those apartments.
And are there any means, not only plans, but means, to add to the number you have?
We cannot add, per HUD policy, any additional apartments. If they are added, it has to come out of our expense. So there would be no subsidy or assistance.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
Machine Dale.
We are passing out the resolution that we wanted to bring to the attention of the city council and to others in the community. I wanted to begin by introducing myself and machine Dale, some of you know me well and some of you don't know me at all. But I'm a coordinator along with Pastor Dave Carlson of a group called the Progressive Christians of Lindesburg. We have been being for the better part of the last year. And we are basically an interdenominational group concerned about advocacy issues that follow from our understanding of our Christian faith. And we have been examining a number of different issues over time. This most reason has to do with the use of plastic, and our concern is about that. So if it's all right with you and the council, I'd like to just read the resolution that we have prepared about this. Whereas the production and one-time use of plastic bags and plastic straws have overwhelmed landfills, rivers, and oceans around the world, and whereas many countries around the world, including the Dukkha in France, Kenya, Zimbabwe, Thailand, Vanuatu, Australia, Canada, Morocco, and Rwanda, have taken actions of various kinds to minimize or ban the use of single-use plastics. And whereas cities around the world, including Montreal, Malibu, Seattle, Hamburg, and New Delhi, have also acted to reduce the impact of non-recyclable plastics on the environment, whereas many corporations and businesses, including Kroger, Disney, Starbucks, Marriott, McDonald's, Dunkin' Donuts, now just Dunkin', I understand, and IKEA are phasing out single-use plastic products in their future. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Lindesburg, Kansas, ban the sale of all plastic straws by the end of the year 2019. Resolve that the same city ban single-use plastic bags by the end of the year 2020. And resolve that city council members and appropriate committees meet with various businesses in the community to develop alternatives such as multiple-use bags or other more environmentally friendly approaches. Our group has already been actively discussing ways in which we can encourage churches and banks and other businesses to subsidize the creation of bags with their own logos on them to advertise themselves, which could be used by people when they do their shopping and thereby not be forced to use single-use plastics all the time. So that's the proposal. It stands, I'm more than happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Kim, what we will probably do is the council, we will have this discussion in council. And depending upon the will of this council as far as bringing a resolution to the floor, and we can let you know as we worked on this. And I want to say thank you very much and to all the people in your group. Even though we're a little place, we still need to be concerned about our impact on the environment and on our goal. So thank you. I hope you will continue to spread this throughout the community and let more people know about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dave, did you have anything you'd like to add to it?
He said it all.
He said it all, all right. Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else for public input? Okay, we'll go through the agenda. Do you have any more amendments to the agenda? During that, I'll go on to the mayor's report. Last weekend, Jerry and Roxy and Greg and Rick and I attended the Kansas Lady Municipality meeting in Topeka. Learned by this, met a lot of people, and it was a really good meeting. I would like to take this time to encourage all council members to attend something. There are many, many opportunities divided by the league. There are regional suppers. At these regional suppers, we will hear the legislative agenda that the Kansas Lady Municipality is going to be putting forth. Those of us in attendance last weekend heard that, heard explanation, how these agenda items impact us here in Lindesburg with our agenda items and how we want to work through our strategic planning and that kind of thing. So I would encourage all of you. You will learn a lot. I know it's just another meeting on your busy schedules, but I think to be a good council member, we all need to be well-informed. Couple reminders. The 29th of this month, there will be a group session to review the strategic plan that our council adopted last March.
Yes.
And probably, Jody, you're the only one that wasn't present on council at that time. Is that right? We think everybody else was there. So anyway, so this might be all new to you. But there should be, you should all have a copy of the strategic plan, and we will review that and see where we are as we work through this year 2018. If you don't have a copy, I'm sure that Roxy or Jerry can get me a copy for you. Another reminder meeting is the Recreation and Wellness Survey that was put out by the city and a group of people that work on that committee. It will be shared with the whole community on the 30th of this month. It will be in Lindquist Hall at 6:30. Please encourage people to come and listen to the review and the results of that survey as we struggle to figure out how we'll be going forward on a possible recreation and wellness facility for this town. 6:30 in Lindquist Hall.
And who is that supposed to be? The city?
And the committee. There were eight people on that committee. And Beth is the person helping to put it all together as well. She's published it online and so on. One other thing that I, Lindesburg is going to be taking part in another league activity this year. And there is a contest called If I Were Mayor. It is for seventh graders. And at the league meeting in January, the winners of this will be announced. They win like $250 or something like that.
I'm not sure.
Yes. Anyway, working with our school system and the seventh-grade government teacher, history teacher. Anyway, they wanted to take part in that this year. So this will be the first time that we have a group of students from Lindesburg participating in that. So if you don't know a seventh grader, you might say, are you writing? Okay, all right.
No, just regular calendar that you have included in the package.
Maybe I'll just have a look at that now.
Huh?
Have a look at that schedule, agenda schedule. Yeah, that's nice. Thank you.
All right, let's go on with the agenda. Consent agenda, do I approve?
Motion.
Second.
Is the new consecutive to approve the consent agenda, Jerry? David?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Consent agenda passed, does?
No, no.
No appointments. Gary, planning his own?
Number four.
Do you have a meeting coming up soon?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, and what is the subject of that?
A sketch plan of a subdivision, first review.
First review, okay. And that'll be at what time and where?
Seven o'clock in the conference room.
Seven o'clock tomorrow night, okay? And those are always open to the public?
Yes.
And any council members that would like to attend? They're welcome to the board.
More tomorrow.
All right, thank you very much. Do I hear any old business? New business? Ordinance 5139.
So I'm asking to repeal the ordinance that we have on our books for the possession of marijuana and perpillia. As those ordinances or those violations have been added to the new form of Public Defense Code book that the league puts out. So we actually have two on the books right now. And just to make sure that they don't clash anyway, I'd like to remove the one from our lease book and just deal with the one in the POC. So that's why I'm repealing the one ordinance.
All right, so you're asking for a repeal of 5139?
No. Ad, what he's asking, he's asking for the adoption of 5139, which then repeals Chapter 32, Division 2, Section 32, Title 7.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hey, Rick?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Gary?
In the package, you'll see Dr. Parker rules that were put together by organized youth of the first Congress. And although these rules are in the form of ordinance and statute, I felt like you was not willing to take a look and provide any recommendations you can give me if you see fit. So on that note, I'll ask for comment and approval.
Oh, I hear a motion to approve. Motion to approve? Second?
Second.
I do have a little micro manager little thing going on here. Could these, maybe a couple of them be grouped together, like by behavior? You've got where owners must clean up after their pet and then must fill up at the top and must leave holes dug by their dog or is way at the bottom. And then I do have a problem with the, just a minute, I'll find it here, the owners must have a leash at all times.
You mean the dog?
Could that be worded a little better? Eat my. But I do, I do think it's helpful if, maybe some of the rules are grouped by the intent, whether it's for the size of the dog, the behavior of the dog, the attire required of the owners.
I will say that a lot of times with people, if it's not completely spelled out in black and white, I didn't know that applied to that. I'm just saying that I deal with this. And seriously, that's a lot of comments we get. Well, it's not on the side. Unfortunately, we have those kind of people out there that you have to hit them on the head with it in order for them to respond to it.
Are you addressing something I said? Because I give them...
I'm just saying if we consolidate some of these things.
No, I just mean bullet them in groups so that they make more sense.
Okay. The way I have to...
Pre-order, something like that.
Cory?
I guess my question is, who's going to enforce these rules?
You, you live closest.
Oh, man, just an apple block. But in seriousness, if any of these rules are to be broken, broken, what is going to be the process that we go through? Are we going to have self-enforcement? Are we going to have potential for harm within the dog park? What are we? Well, I think with this, it's clearly going to be self-enforced. If we have a current problem, I think, like any other code enforcement issue, we'll eventually have to bring in some sort of authority to step in and do something. But I don't want to predict how this is going to play out. In my mind, I see these as guidelines that users of this park will courteously avoid us. Not all the time. If we have problems, they will be reported to the police. That's the way I see it playing out. I don't know of an alternative way of doing this. I think neat rules and guidelines. I wouldn't want to see the park broken without you there. I guess, are there rules? By approving this, are the rules established in ordinance? Are they enforceable, I guess? Why is this approved? Rules or does it need to be ordinance? Well, as a parallel, the trail, we have rules on the trail. There's only two of those rules that are codified in ordinance. That is, you can't have horses on there. And you can't, you cannot have motor vehicles except for emergency vehicles or city maintenance vehicles. So those are enforceable. The rest of them are more to try to impart courtesy of use upon and between users of the trail. And in this case, the user of the park, of the dog park. If you adopt these rules, they do not become codified in ordinance. They just are more rules of courtesy, use, treatment, and respect.
Much like things with rules that are posted at golf courses as well.
And the phone number here of the safety center is?
Yours. Your number.
I guess mine.
Again, I hate to think about the worst that I can easily think about. Still, I'd say if you did have someone that were not a, or was not obeying the rules, or the dog was not obeying the rules, they would just leave or what would the...
My experience on going to dog parks all over the country as we travel is that dog owners who use these parks are extremely wanting to keep the dog parks clean and make them attractive to use and so on. And I've seen many places where someone would say, you have to pick up that off the ground. Or only two dogs at a time. You know, I mean, they're not laws, but I think they're a pretty responsible group of people. Are they all that way? No, Gary goes with this stuff and they may not approve of what he does. But I bet they would though. I was just going to ask about the last one down there, Gary, where it says, all gifts or addition must be approved by city of Lindesburg. I mean, if someone wants to leave $10 to help maintain the park, do we have to go through the city to do this?
No, I believe what we're trying to prevent are certain build-outs, certain assets that may not be outlined yet, council and staff appropriate.
Hey, people want to contribute money to the park. It's done through the city.
I guess, that's true.
That's where, oh, people can bring their donations here and they have donations here and they go into a special fund.
Oh, that's good.
But if somebody, somebody wanted to donate their doggy dining board or some inappropriate...
Yeah.
I don't know if there's such a thing. Cory, your points are a little, hey, I, and yeah, I have a little bit of concern. I have concerns along those lines for special events in the parks, even just day-to-day operations in the parks. But how do we handle people who don't know how to get along? Well, we kind of have to handle it case by case. If there is a civil dispute between parties, there are ways to resolve those disputes. Can you write out the rules for every instance? No, but you'll cross the bridge when you get to it.
Also, just for everybody's information, this is a group of people who, I'm going to say there's five to maybe it's 10, who have been organizing themselves. And they came to the city. They received $7,500 from the city to go into a match. And they're very, they're excited to see where they are. They have a meeting this Wednesday night. If anybody would like to attend the meeting, if that's available. And so I'm extremely appreciative of this group of citizens who are just making on themselves to get going. So was there a motion to approve this?
There is a motion, yes.
There is a motion. And seconded?
Right.
Okay, is there any further discussion about the adoption of these rules? With Betty's caveat of redoing some language. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was it those?
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you, Gary. Billboard renewal.
This is a billboard that we've had for several years now, northbound by the rest area between Person and Lindesburg. Great location. This is a three-year renewal. A little different from the one that we approved just a couple of months ago near Salina. This one, a little less per month, but we pay for the re-rat. So that will actually, we should have built. And again, great location. We don't have a design quite worked out yet. This design will be identical to the one that we planned for the sign, except from in Salina. I'll say this, the billboard that's up there now has been one of the... I'll say this, the billboard that's up there now has been one of the more popular billboards that we've had, kinda paid to replace it. It's been very successful.
What does it say?
It's a Glinsburg Top 100 livability index. Pretty cool.
All right.
How do we measure if it's successful, Matt, right?
Well, I'm, I'm going on the board for CDB Director, which says-
A lot of people come to me and go, I could give you an anecdote. Reasons why your daily people say that they've driven their state, seen our signs, and they finally decided that all that wasn't important. Is that the only answer that's in the poll?
If the signs were yellow, I think so.
That's, that's music. It's funny.
Hey, hey.
Okay, stop! Okay, so Gary, you are asking for a renewal of this?
And I'd like to make the motion that you proceed with renewing the three-year contract with George Lane Signs for a billboard located five miles south of exit seventy-two in the amount of two hundred eighty-six dollars per month with a one-time rewrap charge of four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second to that.
Any more discussion? Gary, is this a you?
David?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you, Gary. So, here we are back to Buckeye Wind Energy Renewable Energy Credits. There's only one person I know that can do this.
On our contract for Buckeye Wind Energy, Wind Energy as well, it's called Renewable Energy Credits, that either can be monetized or kept and used from the standpoint of marketing or promotion that you are, if you're promoting yourself as X percent renewable or having so much amount of renewables. So, the option is one to sell them, which is to monetize them, and the estimated revenue based upon a forty percent capacity factor on a wind farm, and then at fifty cents per credit, monetizing two thousand seventeen's renewable energy credits would generate approximately seventeen hundred and fifty-two dollars. Or you can just retire them without monetizing them. So if we were wanting to promote our utility as, as being, well, in the renewable energy area, hydro power is not considered renewable. Wind is, and solar is. So, right now, under that particular standard, we only have the one megawatt of Buckeye that is renewable and we'd be able to promote that at what makes about eleven percent renewable energy, even though we're about thirty when you throw our hydro power resources.
So, we're looking for a motion to approve this, one motion?
Motion to approve. Second?
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I'm curious as to why when we adopted a green policy a few years ago, you know what I'm talking, okay? I'm not dreaming now, okay? Why we would choose the revenue over the marketability? Just curious.
Help reduce the cost of power. I mean, yeah, I, I mean, we're still getting the benefits of, of green energy. We're just not, and we can still say we have a megawatt of wind energy.
We just can't say-
And we just can't promote it as, okay, we are X percent renewable energy. It's really, it's, it's a bit of semantics. And, but that's why, I'm sorry. But it's the way the federal law is written in terms of renewable energy credits.
Does this, does the, does the chart that's on here indicate that Glinsburg has a forty percent capacity factor? Does that mean we would be forty percent green? That, that's a lot.
No, I mean, if you have a megawatt of capacity, wind energy, a wind turbine does not generate twenty-four, seven, three hundred sixty-five days a year. I mean, there's times that the wind's not blowing, there's times it's blowing so hard you, you have to shut the, shut it off to keep it from, from burning up. So, what that forty percent capacity factor means is that it's operating and producing about forty percent of the time. You still could say you have a megawatt of, of wind energy, it's just that the practical side of it is you're probably producing only forty percent of the time, which when wind energy first started is a tremendous increase because you're looking at about twelve percent capacity factor.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
No.
And here we are at others. We talked about others. Rick, you have an other. Jody, you have an other that you'd like to discuss? Corey? Okay. Denny? Daddy?
Um, no, other than this, this letter we have in front of us, I guess, it's, it, to me, it's kind of vague because it doesn't, it doesn't specify anything in particular. It's just an overall, general concern.
And we've identified some, some properties in that area. One of them, at least from a, from a weed standpoint, has been addressed. There's a structure on one property that Gary and I are going to go take a look at tomorrow. There's another property that in my opinion has some vehicles that need to be addressed. You know, I, I think, at least from an aesthetic standpoint, one of the, I guess, one of my called the biggest non-compliant properties that the weed issue been addressed. But I do think there may be some, one or two other things on that property that we need to take a closer look at and verify whether it is non-compliant or not.
And I guess, if I'm speaking out of turn, please let me know. I guess the, the thing that concerned me is, is it is time for you to get our officers out to re-engage our citizens concerning property owner code compliance and the fact that we don't have anyone that has time to be a compliance officer right now. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And it's someone, and it's someone visited with, the author of this letter about that, that frankly, we don't have time. That our, that our citizens do need to be engaged and identify this, but we don't have compliance.
I guess I, I'm not sure, I would say we don't have time. We just don't have a public force to pause. And so when something like this comes to our attention, we always look at the police department and Tim and his officers are the ones that, that look at the complaint. And, but it's not just their job, we have to assist them. So, and it is, you know, we've talked over time about hiring a compliance officer, a code enforcement officer, possibly working with other communities, and we just don't ever do anything in place. So, but this will be addressed tomorrow. Thank you.
Well, we're gonna look at one property.
One, yes.
Yeah.
No, not people.
Yes, I mean, I, we've driven through the neighborhood and for by and large, those properties seem to be compliant.
Still, this, this letter is frustrating to me in that it doesn't identify anything. This is just a broad complaint that we're not doing our job to raise these places up. And I mean, if this person is serious, they might have mentioned some specific ones, but did not.
Well, and the challenge is our staffing levels and we handle these more on a complaint basis than we do on actively pursuing on a regular basis.
Right. And once you receive the complaint, then what's the first thing that's going?
Well, we investigate the claim. Just because we receive a complaint doesn't mean it's not compliant. We investigate it to determine because while they may specify something or not specify something, we have to determine whether it's not compliant with the ordinances that we have in place. And if so, which one? And, you know, sometimes it may not be the most aesthetically pleasing property in the world, but if it's not a danger to health and safety, way of structurally sound and things like that, not a lot we can do. But if it, if there are health and safety issues or structurally deficient things like that, then we proceed to notify them, give them time to rectify the issue. And if they don't rectify it, then they're given notice of the opportunity to request a hearing before we take formal action.
With the city council?
Yes, it's with city council, yes.
Yeah, do you have the others?
No.
Actually, the other one, based on the weather we had, the rain, how did we feel like all of the work we've done in Irwin? I live over there, so I saw ponds form and go away, so I just thought, had everything drained.
I think it handled it extremely well. I can, I would refer to Chris in particular because it was Chris and the guys in his department that had to manage the flow gates. But I, in my opinion, they did a great job of managing the flow through the culverts without overburdening the drainage way, but at the same time, not letting the water back up so much on the backside that it endangered properties there. You know, and it was, it was pretty interesting. I mean, I don't think it ever left the main channel. And, you know, it, even at towards the end of that rain fall, it was, I mean, it would come up, but within twenty-four hours, it was back down again. So I don't know if you wanna add anything to that, Chris?
It's, it, it's an ongoing process to learn what we can do and, and how much we can actually manipulate things. And it's, it's something that is going to be different with each and every event because two inches of rain in twenty-four hours is a whole lot different than two inches of rain in thirty minutes. So it's a matter of paying attention to the radar and the forecast, trying to maintain where we're at and, and learning over time what one gate does versus two gates versus three gates. We don't wanna try and pull too many more than I think what we have done at this point. But it's, the process works well. We just need to be on top of it and watching it and prepared. But I think what we have in place works very well at this point in time, so.
Feel like the gates were an asset to the community?
Yes, yes, it's, it, the whole concept was restricting the flow, but it's very easy to manipulate the flows too. And, and that's where the versatility comes in. We can, it's like Greg said, we can, we can allow it to back up to a certain point, but depending on the forecast and, and what it looks like, we can start letting some of that water through so in case something does happen and we get more, we will have let more water through and, and we're not gonna be so burdened at that point. But it's, it's definitely an, an ongoing and learning process as, as time comes on. And I have taken a lot of pictures through the last couple of storms that point out certain areas that we can still give some attention to and learn from as well.
When we were at the big meeting last week and they start coming on your phone and showing pictures on Facebook and all of that, and so Greg jumps up and runs out to the hallway to start making some phone calls, comes back in and he says, we're okay, Chris has it. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And all of the people in your department. It's great.
Thank you.
Chris, do you have one, I know that their big ditch is going, that's the next project of this whole water remediation down there. Did everybody on house, we all know what's going on?
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, is that there's more work to come, if I'm correct, and just kind of recap on what, what that includes in.
They're looking and re-engineering an extension to the big ditch, widening the ditch, excavating some of the, the soil out of that. I believe they're gonna be putting a berm on the east side of that all along. It will go to Highway Four, they will add another culvert at that point. And then the, the culverts at the railroad by the river will be removed as well. So, I think that the agreement is such that we will go to Wells Fargo and they will look at that. There's a lot of water that comes off of, of the fields to the west of the substation. And I think if some of that can be captured, that really will help to divert some of the water that comes into town and ends up going through the channel, so. But that work is in progress as far as the engineering is going. I've not heard any updates. I don't know if Greg has heard any updates or Gary has heard any updates on the progress that they're having yet.
They have, I'm not sure if they've completed survey, but they were, had started it before the rain set in. But they were hoping they actually would be done with survey by the end of next week. How much rain and like that, I don't know. But they were also looking at flying a part of the drones, which will, which will help. Hopefully they have engineering done in December. Still gonna be a lot of details to deal with, with widening the channel, things like that. Have to look at e-sprints, all of those types of things we have in place. With the, the, or the hope to be bidding by late February, so construction, excuse me, construction can happen in the summer and be completed by middle of fall at the latest. When I say middle of fall of twenty nineteen.
And to confirm, you did say that the channel may or will be extended north of Wells Fargo?
No. No.
Will not.
No, no. But I think if they can, there's some culverts that are in play at the drive there. And I think if they can look at redesigning some of that and depending on how it comes together at Wells Fargo with the extension, if they can tie that together somehow and send that water across.
Are you trying to send it south to the river and not east into the-
Correct, correct. And that, those are some things that after the initial discussions and the contract was put together, those were some things that came together through this last storm that I have a lot of pictures of that, that show that as a problem area. So those discussions need to be held with the engineers.
Thank you, Chris. Any other others? No? David?
No.
Happy Chinese.
I was not able to find the origin, but there is a book that has been written and its title will be off the pick.
Well, that's a good news.
Are you reading for Christmas?
It actually is a Christmas book.
Thank you, Gary. Hey, okay.
Move weight adjourned?
You move weight adjourned? All right, go here a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody.
I was just worried for our, our, just worried for the food from the, just being placed along.
I'm not that confident.